Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, October 29th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Members, it is now 10:25 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But today is Friday and as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Ludlow.
Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, LA, and happy Friday. Halloween weekend. It's an honor to be here and I hope everyone has a safe, safe holiday, or shouldn't say holiday, safe weekend. Today is an exciting, exciting time, not only in the 10th Council District but in the city of LA, as tonight we're going to be opening the Innate Holden Performing Arts Center on Washington Boulevard. And there's no better way to open a city facility for the city of Los Angeles, as we know the city is, the city of Los Angeles is the film capital of the world. And so whenever we, absolutely, the honorable mayor of Hollywood is clapping his hands, when we open up a performing arts center in Los Angeles, we do it with grand style. We're just honored that tonight, the first performance, the first official performance for this facility is going to be a play entitled "Moving Man" by the legend who stands behind me. We are honored today to welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Chambers, the great Glenn Turman. We'd like to give him a round of applause.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, October 29th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Members, it is now 10:25 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But today is Friday, and as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Ludlow.
Good morning, L.A., and happy Friday. Halloween weekend. It's an honor to be here, and I hope everyone has a safe, safe holiday, or shouldn't say holiday, a safe weekend. Today is an exciting, exciting time, not only in the 10th Council District, but in the city of L.A., as tonight, we're going to be opening the innate hole in Performing Arts Center on Washington Boulevard. And there's no better way to open a city facility for the city of Los Angeles, as we know the city is, the city of Los Angeles is the film capital of the world. And so whenever we, absolutely, the Honorable Mayor of Hollywood is clapping his hands, when we open up a performing arts center in Los Angeles, we do it with grand style. We're just honored that tonight, the first performance, the first official performance for this facility is going to be a play entitled "Moving Man" by the legend who stands behind me. We are honored today to welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Chambers, the great Glenn Thurman. Would like to give him a round of applause. Now, I know that Mayor Han is the mayor of Los Angeles, but I'm standing here with the mayor of the HBO series, The Wire. This is Mayor Clarence Royce, for those of you that have been watching the HBO series for the last season. He's here with his wife, Joanne, and his longtime friend and manager, Pamela Goodlow-Green. We're just so honored to have them here. Now, many of you in the chambers could probably rattle off more about Mr. Thurman than what we have, but I'd like to take just a moment to reflect on a little bit of his biography. Over forty years in the entertainment industry, a veteran of stage and screen, an NAACP Lifetime Achievement Award winner. He has such credits as A Raisin in the Sun, Sons of Lincoln, Money Ride, A Different World. Many of us will never forget the long, award-winning season of A Different World, and many, many others. In addition to his on-screen performances and accomplishments, his vision and sheer determination has also been exhibited through his effort to break through the barriers. Many of the entertainers throughout Hollywood have recognized Glenn for being a trailblazer, and someone that has fought to ensure that diversity was always appreciated or recognized by Hollywood. One of the challenges that he has faced through his life as an African-American entertainer has been accomplished in many, many ways. I recognize him as somebody who has never given up on children. Many of you may not be aware that both he and his wife, Joanne, following the '92 civil unrest in Los Angeles, with their own money, opened up a phenomenal program called Camp Giddyup, north of Los Angeles in the mountains. If any of you want to see ways and programs that can be utilized to move young people away from gang violence and many of the challenges that they face growing up in an urban center like Los Angeles, one hour on the Thurman's Ranch will show you a priceless accomplishment that we ought to replicate in many cities around the country. Camp Giddyup takes children from the inner city and allows them to experience working on a ranch for an entire week during the hot summer months of August. Glenn and his wife have many other achievements, but obviously, one of the ones that they're most proud of is their raising a wonderful, wonderful daughter, who I'm sorry couldn't be here with us today, but if you meet this young lady, you will just be amazed at the job that these two individuals have done as parents. I am honored to present this resolution. This won't compete as a Lifetime Achievement Award from the NAACP, or from many of the organizations that have represented him, but I wanted to mention just a couple of things on this resolution, Glenn, and I know the tradition here, before we let you speak, is there may be a couple of members of the council that would like to say a word or two to you as well. Mr. Thurman has directed several seasons of The Parenthood, A Different World, Hanging with Mr. Cooper, The Wayans Brothers, and the '80s ABC hit Dynasty. He played the role, the Colonel Taylor, on A Different World, starred on roles with Law and Order, and, as was just mentioned, this new great series, The Wire. It is a real honor to present someone who premiered on Resurrection Boulevard and Sahara, which is coming out. This is an honor for the city of Los Angeles, Glenn, to present you with this resolution, honoring all of your years of work and what we are surely going to enjoy continued success in the entertainment and film industry. Please, give a warm round of applause to the legendary Glenn Thurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glenn, I just want to tell you, thank you for what you do for kids. We really appreciate particularly those young people you take from the 8th District and give them an opportunity to see what it is to be out on a ranch and see what livestock is. And one thing, I don't know if many people know, you have to go to the African-American rodeo to see a real cowboy, and Glenn Thurman is a real cowboy. To see him ride, I don't know if they call it the relay, or what, the relay, that, I mean, I'm afraid of horses, and in fact, I'm afraid of most things larger than I am, but I tell you, he gets on a horse and rides it unbelievable, and the skills he has, we think of him as an actor, but to see him out there in real-life cowboy equipment and riding that horse is unbelievable. But the kids in 8th District are really appreciative of what you and your wife do for them, and we certainly will continue supporting that camp, because that's the only time they get an opportunity to be in an environment like that, and they come back with a different perspective. So just keep up the good work with kids, because the investment in prevention is far greater return than rehabilitation. But thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you so much, Councilman Ludlow, for those kind, kind words. Councilman Parks. And the City Council, thank you so much for taking the time to honor myself and my wife for these kind words and this beautiful, beautiful citation. Very seldom at a loss for words, but I really find myself being sort of stumbling right about now. I need a script. Man, Johnny, can you help me? But I am indeed honored to receive this. I love this city. I remember getting off the plane, coming to this city in 1968, and saying, "This is where I want to be," and was so glad that the city has received me and afforded me so many opportunities that, as a boy, I was only dreaming about. And now to see some of those things come true for me, and then to have the opportunity to make some of those dreams come true for some of the youth of our city, has been a real blessing that the Almighty has bestowed upon me, and I hope that I am doing what He wants me to do in sharing those blessings. So, thank you so much. Of course, I couldn't do it without my beautiful wife, Joanne, and my dear friend, Pamela Goodlow-Green, and this wonderful council. Thank you so much.
Just to close, Councilmember Parks referenced something. For those of you that saw last year's King Parade, those horses and cowboys that were in there included one of your colleagues, myself, and we had the time of our life riding horses, but you should know, he's wearing cowboy boots right now. So we're excited about that. Anyway, Glenn, we're so proud of you and appreciate it, and when you get a chance to see this play, "Moving Man," it's a story of his life. He wrote it, he directed it, and it's just a phenomenal, phenomenal piece of work. So we're so excited about seeing you opening night tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow, and I see Mr. Villarosa up there. Mr. Villarosa? Do you have an announcement?
I have a little.
Okay.
You know, we're here today, obviously, to do the people's business, but we have a great opportunity to celebrate the birthday of a young man who looks twenty years younger, but is a few years older today. If we can, I think there's a cake somewhere. Do we have a cake? I heard we have a cake. I'm not jumping out of the cake, that's for sure, but he may. Here we go. Yes, we do have a cake. Yeah. Look at that. Now, Mr. Ludlow, how old are you? How old are you? Yeah. That's forty years old. Forty years old. Forty years young. All right. Yeah. We did a little... Okay, on the count of three, everybody. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Martin.
Well, let me thank, thank you, Councilmember Villarosa, and everyone for that. I want to thank my staff. That's a great surprise. You guys have to know, Councilman Holden is standing right there. I have been putting my staff through so many changes in the last two weeks, getting ready for opening night tonight. I can't believe they even want to come in here and sing "Happy Birthday" to me. So this is doubly special, and I really appreciate it. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
I want to know, though, I want to know, Mr. Holden, he's forty years old. I want to know if he could do more one-handed push-ups than you. Uh-oh, here it comes, here it comes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Never a dull moment in L.A. City Hall. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardinals Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Laban, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session for our next presentation. Let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti.
Johnny?
Yes, sir.
Come on over. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know we're calling the paramedics in to help Mr. Ludlow after those push-ups. We wish him a very happy birthday, and Nate tells me he could have done eleven easily, but he hates to brag like that. Today, we have a few presentations, but it gives me great joy to be here with two men who you will all know and recognize and love very much. Johnny Grant, our mayor of Hollywood and director of this year's Hollywood Christmas Parade, and also, of course, Kris Kringle, also known to us all as Santa Claus. Welcome, Sam. Let's give him a round of applause for being here. Now, this is not a Hallmark Santa Claus, this is the real deal. He took time out of his schedule to be here. Once he heard that Kofi Annan had been here last year, he said, "I've got to come to City Council as well and let everybody know about the Hollywood Christmas Parade." But the Hollywood Christmas Parade, which is one of the greatest traditions we have in Los Angeles, indeed in this country, has always been, in the last few decades, on fragile footing, because it is the television stations' policies quite often to not stage as many parades anymore. But Johnny Grant, who literally has been there in Hollywood during the best of times, the worst of times, and now again during the best of times, and I asked Tom Laban to join us as well, who I share Hollywood with, has almost single-handedly revived and saved this year's Hollywood Christmas Parade. He's dedicated his entire career, we know, to the worldwide promotion of Hollywood. Tireless efforts that we see, whether it's a star ceremony, whether it's promoting a new business that's opening, or whether it's making sure that our Christmas Parade is as strong as it can be. Johnny Grant, indeed, is the very best of Los Angeles. He's made Hollywood the entertainment capital of the world. He's never shy about letting people know about that, and his renowned supervision of the Hollywood Walk of Fame has made sure that that landmark has been cared for in the way that it deserves. He's been a city commissioner on the Fire Commission, on our Cultural Heritage Commission, and he's the executive producer of the 2004 Hollywood Christmas Parade on Hollywood Boulevard and Sunset, of course, as well, November 28th, as always, the Sunday after Thanksgiving. This annual tradition will be televised this year on KTLA Channel 5. We've got some great floats this year, and our grand marshal is none other than Magic Johnson, L.A.'s finest. So with this, I'd like to commend Johnny Grant with Tom Laban, and I'm sure Tom will like to say something too, for all the work that he has done for this city, for the work that he's done in Hollywood, for being one of the most incredible mayors this country has ever seen, and for loving Hollywood with all of his heart, and making sure that this year's Christmas Parade will be the success of all those others. So please, give him a round of applause, and we'll hear from Tom Laban.
Eric, thank you, and thank you for your leadership always, Eric, and the parade is a great day, a tradition, right after Thanksgiving. This year, it starts at 5:00, and wonderful to go down Hollywood Boulevard, down Vine, across Sunset, and it's amazing how many people come, and it's amazing how many people take the subway, which is so good to see the throngs of people there at the Vine Street exit, the subway, and all that area. But Johnny Grant is who I want to say a few words, Sam, I'll say a few words about you, but I'm going to mail you something, if you could, up there in the North Pole. Johnny Grant is one of the best people in the world, in the whole wide world, and this country has someone who's very special in Johnny Grant. For all that he has done, there's no one like Johnny Grant, not just this parade, but other parades that he has held as a chair, especially the Desert Storm Parade, where he was the first parade in this country that brought Vietnam veterans together with the veterans from Desert Storm, who marched down Sunset Boulevard in a great, great parade. I just have a pleasure of working with Johnny for so many years, working for the late, great John Ferraro. Johnny would call John, or Tom Bradley, and he would get things done, kind of the way Dorothy Green gets things done in this city nowadays. He's that kind of magic, and he believes in Hollywood, and he believes in people, and it's going to be a great parade. So, Mr. Garcetti, if we can, let's salute the great Johnny Grant, and let's call it Johnny Grant Day in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Tom and Eric, and a couple of the things that I have in my little speech here have been said, but I do want to repeat them. It is a joy to be here with you and Santa Claus, and we'll hear from Santa in just a moment. I appreciate this Los Angeles City proclamation encouraging the entertainment industry, the stars, both young and veteran, the publicists, agents, and corporate sponsors, to all enthusiastically support the Hollywood Christmas Parade. As we all know, Hollywood is one of the most famous brand names in the world. Think about that. Hollywood, a famous brand name. And this parade is not only a part of the ethos of the Hollywood community, but one of the major components in the hyperbole machine promoting Hollywood as the movie capital of the world, and we all know it is one of the most popular tourist destinations in the world. And, you know, that famous brand name Hollywood has been used by actors, producers, and directors to enhance their careers and lifestyles, and I'm inviting them today to sustain the seventy-three-year-old tradition. I'm asking them to join us and help do that, and also to position the parade for continuation well into the future. We're all delighted to have Magic Johnson, the Magic Man, will be out there, and a lot of his friends will be with him, a great galaxy of stars, and some of the finest bands in the world, ladies and gentlemen, including the USC marching band, and I am pleased to say, the United States Marine Corps Band, will all be in the Hollywood Christmas Parade this year. So, thank you very much. My friend, Santa Claus, heard that there was a possibility that will be no... I'm going to start that again. My friend, Santa Claus, heard that there was a possibility that there might not be a Hollywood Christmas Parade this year. So he got right on that sleigh, got his reindeer out, and he came down to Hollywood to help me lobby and promote, and I can tell you, we are going to have the finest Christmas Parade we've had in a long time. And let me, let me thank Santa and have him come up and say a few words.
And thank you all, and I want to especially thank Johnny. When I was up in the North Pole, and I heard that there was problems with this wonderful venue, the Hollywood Christmas Parade, I thought, I better come down and see what's going on. I think Johnny has everything under control, he's going to build it up again, and he's going to do a wonderful job. In the spirit of giving, of Christmas, I would like to present this book, "Inventing Christmas: How Our Holiday Came to Be," to the honorary mayor of Hollywood.
Thank you. Thank you.
My ghostwriters did a wonderful job on this.
Glenn Thurman would be a tough act to follow, but we're going to do it right here, and I hope you guys will tape this for me. We're all going to do our own inimitable style of "Ho, Ho, Ho." So, Santa, you want to be first?
"Ho, Ho, Ho." I would like to remind you, you only have fifty-seven days to prepare for my visit.
"Ho, Ho, Ho." The parade starts early this year at 5:00. Okay, Eric, do your "Ho, Ho."
"Ho, Ho, Ho, Venga na Hollywood."
Good job, Mr. Garcetti. Hey, "Ho, Ho, Ho," be in Hollywood for the great Hollywood Christmas Parade by Johnny Grant.
"Ho, Ho, Ho," Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I remember Johnny as a little lad, over in, growing up in Hollywood, going to the Santa Claus Lane Parade every Christmas with my folks and my brother, and then I joined the LAPD, and I remember working that parade route, I remember as a motor officer, and then as a council member the last couple of years, my colleagues, Tom Laban and Eric Garcetti, I have ridden in that parade the last three years. It's always been an exciting experience, and I know that the people turn out in great numbers for that parade. So I've seen this thing come full circle, and earlier conversation this morning, you've invited this council, you've invited the members of the City Council this year, along with my colleagues, who always lead that off with the mayor, to join this year, which is a wonderful celebration, and it's a lot of fun for... of fun for us to ride in that parade. And I appreciate your offer for the colleagues, myself, to ride this year. I know that Eric and Tom, we discussed that in the past. Johnny's extended invitation to us, and it's really a pleasurable experience to show the unity and the support of the City Council, the mayor, and everyone working to revitalize Hollywood and to make it what it is, and to have those thousands of people turn out every single year. So I remember it from a little kid on the street, watching it, and growing up through it, and then finally riding it. So it's a pleasure. I appreciate the offer. And talking around this horseshoe, everybody's really excited about it this year, and we want to join our colleagues who lead Hollywood. And I know that Hollywood split between Garcetti and LeBonde, and we all support your wonderful projects and revitalization, and I'm looking forward to it once again this year, to celebrate in that beautiful Hollywood parade. It used to be the Santa Claus Lane Parade, and then Santa Claus used to, for a week after or two weeks after, ride down the float, and people would come out and see it. We really need to go back to that tradition because it's so beneficial for everyone. And Santa, thank you for coming out early today, and thank Mrs. Claus. I don't know if we introduced Mrs. Claus, who's here also. We should introduce Mrs. Claus, who's here with Santa Claus. So we're looking forward to it once again this year. Tom, Eric, you do a great job up there, and we're here supporting everything you do. And I know that after the parade, we'll go to Musso and Frank, and Tom LeBonde will buy food for everyone. Thank you very much. Ho, ho, ho.
Ho, 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 Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, let me add my voice to the many about Hollywood. As you know...
Ho, 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 come on.
Ho, ho, ho. Or in Spanish, oh, oh, oh. Let me just say that Johnny, as someone who had the opportunity to represent Hollywood for six years, who's known you for more than 15, if every community had an honorary mayor like you, with the passion, the excitement, and love for their community in the way that you do, we'd all be better off. So I just wanted to acknowledge you as a great friend of the people of Hollywood and Los Angeles, and a great friend of mine.
One question that was asked of Santa colleagues was whether the council has been more naughty or more nice this year. He said, "We've been more nice than we've been naughty." So I think you're all getting some presents this year. Again, want to thank Johnny Grant and Santa and Mrs. Claus for being here, and we hope to see everybody November 28th, starting at 5:00 PM, Sunday, at the Hollywood Christmas Parade 2004. Thank you very much.
I'd like to invite all of you to come down, and let's do a group shot with Santa Claus. All of the council members, if you'd come down front, and we'll get a shot with Santa
Well, from Santa Claus, who, if you remember, colleagues, last year brought us coal. Mr. Deaton, sometimes known as Grinch himself, should take note, if he might be heading over to DWP, that Santa brought us coal but was very proud that we have now a renewable portfolio standard. And in that light, I'd like to invite our honorees from the Coalition Environmental and Jewish Life and the Los Angeles Interfaith Environmental Council forward as well. These two groups are remarkable groups, familiar to everybody around this horseshoe. And this year, our City Council joined with them in presenting the fifth annual Environmentalist of the Year Awards to four outstanding agents of change, none of whom are strangers to us or is strangers to us. Let me share a few quick facts about each of the folks that's here today, and then let you hear from them. We all know, and Tom LeBonde, of course, alluded to Dorothy Green, who you'll see in this year's ballot, having signed Proposition O. That's just an impartial statement about that. She's the founding president of Heal the Bay, and she received last night the lifetime achievement award. Because quite literally, she has made a lifetime commitment to environmental and social justice change in our community. She's made a large impact on our state as a leader in numerous environmental organizations. And as I mentioned before, in July earlier this year, she testified from this podium that action was necessary, resulting in putting Proposition O on the ballot. In addition, though, to healing... Sorry, to founding Heal the Bay, Dorothy Green also helped found two more important organizations, Public Officials for Water and Environmental Reform Power, an organization of water officials that was formed in 1991 to bring a more progressive point of view to the water industry, and the Los Angeles and San Gabriel Rivers Watershed Council, which is a coalition of government agencies, community groups, business, and academia that's formed to improve communication among the stakeholders of our watershed. And our watershed is much more complex than political lines, and I think Dorothy Green understands that, that as much as we stay in our own silos, it's necessary for all of us to talk to one another, to flow together just as water itself does. She served as a commissioner on the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, appointed by Mayor Tom Bradley, and served for six years on each of the state and national governing boards of common cause, where she worked to publicly finance election campaigns. Why don't I give hers first? Please welcome me in congratulating Dorothy Green on this lifetime achievement award. Would you like to say something first, Dorothy, before we go to the next?
Sure.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes, if I may.
It's really...
If he wants to say something first.
Oh. Ms. Green, I just wanted to stand and recognize and thank you for your hard work. A few years ago, when we met, I spoke about the communities in and along our waterways. I spoke of those communities that don't have the kind of representation that the mainstream has throughout the past decades. I talked about the folks who don't get the opportunity to participate in all the community meetings because they're working two jobs. I talked to you about the children who are stuck in their apartments because they don't have green space. And we spoke about how waterways and open space and natural habitats can become those vehicles that can release those pressures. And you understood?
Yes.
The stereotype is those folks who are focused on the beach and Heal the Bay are not concerned with what's happening to the people who don't have access to these or the luxury to be in these decision-making arenas. And you have been breaking those stereotypes. You have been making strong efforts, allowing those who can participate to understand the significance of those who don't have that luxury. And for that, I want to thank you, because we know the Alley River runs through so many communities. It was not only about open space, it was not only about natural habitat, it was about quality of life for the folks who are not heard. And for that, I want to thank you, because it is one community, one city, one region, and you always brought that to light, and I always treasure that, and I want to thank you for being that conduit and bringing together all these different stakeholders in such a dramatic way. Thank you so much, Ms. Green.
Well, thank you so much, Councilman Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Eric, for ensuring that the council recognizes Dorothy today. You deserve this lifetime achievement recognition, but you deserve so many more, and you've received them before, you're going to continue to receive them, because you... I mean, not only have you been right on the issues, but you have motivated so many people to become involved in environmental organizations. And just your model of creating, out of whole cloth, an environmental organization and having it become as successful as Heal the Bay has become, you know, you are one of the role models for Lee, standing right behind you, to put together the Coalition on the Environment and Jewish Life. You are one of Marlene's role models in her work with Pacoima Beautiful. And you're just one of Michelle Kleiner's role models, because Michelle Kleiner has a lot of role models, and she's there. And I wanted to say your name on TV. But it's wonderful to see you here. I'm so proud to be a friend of yours and to have seen what you've accomplished over the years, and I love Heal the Bay. I'm very proud to send my dues in, and one reason I am so proud is because of everything you've contributed to them and to so many other groups over the years. Congratulations, Dorothy, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Weiss. Okay. It's really a great honor and privilege to be recognized by this incredible group of City Council people. I think this is the best City Council that we've had in my memory. It's more environmentally tuned in than we have been, and I really appreciate and I'm grateful for the support that I've gotten from so many of you, which really calls to mind the problems that the environmental movement is facing now in the broader public policy, politics, where it's becoming more and more divisive along party lines. That's one of the things I really appreciate here in the Los Angeles City Council, where partisan politics does not play a role. It's a nonpartisan body. But as the environment becomes more and more partisan, I think it becomes ever more important to look towards our communities of faith to help us move forward in the environment. And that's why I am really so very pleased to be honored by COJO and by the Ecumenical Councils here, because I really see communities of faith as being where we have to go now in order to continue to move forward on environmental issues for our city, for our state, and for the world. Thank you.
Mr. Villarosa.
Thank you again, Councilmember Garcetti, for bringing these fine people here. And let me just say something about Dorothy. It was, I guess, in 1997 that I brought Dorothy and many environmental leaders together to put together what became the most far-reaching investment in public parks and open space, Proposition 12. And Dorothy was one of the principal architects of that vision and that dream. The $88 million for the river was a brainchild of a group of people who were in that room when I was speaker, and Dorothy was at the head of the table. So I want to thank you for that and for all your work over the many years. All of you are people who, like Dorothy, understand that one of the most important things that we could do is give our children the great natural resources that they deserve, better parks and open space, cleaner water and air. I thank you for the work that you do.
Mr. LeBonde.
Mr. Garcetti, thank you. You know, not only just bringing Santa Claus and Johnny Grant, but you brought Dorothy Green to this great chamber, because Dorothy has been an angel in the City of Angels in starting the movement with Heal the Bay. I mean, it all starts with one person, and you were that one person, along with others, but you were the one person. It's like a quarterback. You're the Brent Favre of, you know, football analogy. I love football. Okay, you know what I mean. You're able to lead people. The key of a quarterback is able to call a play and lead all those other people to move down the field and reach a goal. And Dorothy Green has been our quarterback, if I could use, or our conductor, if you want me to be more symphonic, if that's the right... That's not even the right word, Ed. I'm way off there. You've been so special to us, but also the revitalization of the Los Angeles River. You know, you start with Louis McAdams, but you came right in. And then you also went beyond to the San Gabriel River and this whole region. We're truly so fortunate to have your advocacy and to have you fight for the great good of clean water for all of Southern California, all of Los Angeles. You are very special, Dorothy Green, and it's an honor to have you in our chambers and have you receive this award from Mr. Garcetti. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gattinus.
Hold on, Mr. Garcetti. I just want to thank you, Dorothy, on behalf of my children, and if they'd be fortunate to have children, on behalf of their children and their children and their children, because the work that you do and the commitment that you have will span generations, and I hope and pray, hundreds and hundreds of years, of good practice and also realizing that us as human beings, we have a lot of responsibility, and we could do a lot of destruction, but it doesn't really take that much more to do the right thing and protect what is ours and what is everyone's. And you mentioned earlier, we have to do the right thing in this city, and you complimented us as a body for moving in that direction. I'd like to thank Eric Garcetti for his leadership, and Council President Padilla, and Wendy Gruehl, and many of us that collectively come from different vantage points, but on these issues, we are very much of the same mind. And I just want to thank you for your leadership and for being a teacher. We're all students of yours, and I'd also... I would be remiss if I didn't mention one of my teachers, when it comes to learning more about the environment and how I can be effective as a legislator, as a policymaker, is a good, good man, Fred Keely. Fred Keely arrived in Sacramento. Unlike many of us, he had something on his sleeve, and he wore it on his sleeve, and that is being a protector and a believer and a policymaker for the environment. So on behalf of Fred Keely and one of his students, I want to say thank you very much for your leadership, and I think it's our honor to honor you here today. Thank you.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to join with all of my colleagues and congratulate each and every one of you who was able to be present last night, although I think Eric and Jack were there, and Greg was there, but you all, we're all going to different places. But you had a number of individuals who were there to support Lee and your organization and all of you being honored. And I want to echo, Dorothy and I have known each other for a very long time when I was in the mayor's office, and she has been the teacher, the mentor, the conscience of everyone to make sure that we are doing everything we can to improve the environment at every level, no matter what it was. And I want to echo what Councilmember Cardenas said as well, because my son loves the park and loves the beach and loves being outside, and without all of you that are standing there, who have dedicated your life to this, it would not be the same type of place or the same type of atmosphere. And so we still have a lot of work to do and roll up our sleeves and continue to do that, but I know that each of you will remind us of what we can do as elected officials and as parents and as just human beings to improve the environment. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for bringing them here today.
Thank you all so much, colleagues. It's clear the impact that Dorothy has had, not only on our lives as individuals, but certainly on our city and on our earth. The next honoree is Marlene Grossman, also a very familiar hero to all of us here, who was honored with the Jewish Environmentalist of the Year Award. Marlene was well-known as Executive Director of Pacoima Beautiful, which is a nonprofit organization focuses on environmental justice and environmental health issues in the northeast San Fernando Valley, specifically in the community of Pacoima. She co-founded this organization in 1996, and she's also participating in the campaign for Proposition O. Her special contribution to the environmental justice movement was to insist that Pacoima residents themselves shall identify and direct the resolution of their environmental issues. Environmentalism, I think we can all confess, in the past, often acted on communities and made decisions for communities instead of with and actually from communities. She has helped build leadership skills for Pacoima residents and helped them become the advocates for positive change, and in particular, to join youth efforts as well on improving the environment. Marlene has done other things. She was one of the founding members of Lonnie, the Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative Board, and was also a co-author of design guidelines for both the San Vicente Scenic Corridor Specific Plan and Van Nuys Boulevard, which has really served as a model for commercial corridors throughout Los Angeles and of design guidelines for that area as well. Marlene has also served on the boards of Tree People, CORO Southern California, and is a former appointee to the Los Angeles City Board of Zoning Appeals. I want to thank her personally. She's been a friend. We've been able to write an op-ed together and do some other things, and she's really... As much as we talk about Dorothy Green having been one of the first here in the city, Marlene Grossman is in that same cloth, cut from that same cloth, and really well-deserves this Jewish Environmentalist of the Year Award.
Alex?
Ms. McCaus.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. But I did want to stand up for Marlene, one, because she is a constituent, but as Mr. Garcetti has said, she also echoes so much of what Dorothy is to her as well as everyone else who's standing there. And I think, Mr. Reyes, you were talking about your first meeting Dorothy and talking about issues in a focused area that had perhaps not received as much environmental attention that it needed. So too, Marlene started, many years ago, I met her very, very early on when I started in Marvin's office, and she was working then in her neighborhood and in her community, trying to create something of beauty, and she actually created something called Brentwood Beautiful. And then, having been successful there, she said, you know, we should bring this to other areas. And the first area that she chose to create and bring that additional beauty and help work with the community to bring things back was the community of Pacoima, the neighborhood of Pacoima. And she has been there, and I know she's called now the Angel of Pacoima, I believe, because of the work she's done there, not just in doing environmental things like trees and planting and getting kids involved with Tree People, but also she's gone into the schools and worked with the charter schools there to really make those connections, not only environmentally, but in every other way, the health of the community, the health of the students, and the health of the future. So as each of these people are being introduced about what they have done and we know are going to continue to do, it truly is an amazing, and it's rewarding for us to see you getting these awards, because you are doing incredible work throughout the communities, and we really, really appreciate it. And thankfully, just one time a year, we can bring you here to say thank you.
I just, while Marlene is at the podium, want to add my few compliments as well, because it's been a tremendous honor to work with her in my district, in the community. I know many of you standing there as part of this presentation, we've known each other, we've talked, we've worked together here in City Hall, we've exchanged reports, we've attended press conferences, but nobody has put rubber to the road in my district and in front of my own eyes more than Marlene Grossman. It's easy to talk about the statistics and talk about the studies, but it's not easy to then turn around and go door-to-door, organize, whether it's in people's living rooms or backyards or in that too-small office that Pacoima Beautiful has in the corner of Van Nuys Glen Oaks, do the training, do the education, do the advocacy work, coming out to committee meetings and public hearings and community meetings. That's great work that's done, and you see really a community come to life once they have that sense of education and empowerment on issues that are critical and important. So, Marlene, just want to thank you for that, and we have a community meeting on Price Fisher coming up.
I know we do. Okay. Thank you so much. I'm very grateful and especially appreciative of Lee and his work at COJO and Dorothy, and I need you to come up. I do. This is your time. Well, because it really is about Dorothy and so many others who have been partners in this work and who have been supportive, and Alex Padilla and Tony Cardenas, Cindy, who has been there from the very beginning, and all of you who have been supportive and partnering, and together, we will be able to really make some real progress, because as Dorothy said, this city council is committed to doing what's right, and so let's do it together. And thank you all so very, very much.
Next, not here in person, but well-represented, Terry Tammonen was honored as the Interfaith Environmentalist of the Year. And he was there at the ceremonies last night, of course, as our Secretary of the California Environmental Protection Agency work has taken him away from us. But last night, somebody came up to me and didn't know Terry and introduced himself to Terry, and then asked, what is your background? He learned that he was Secretary of the EPA, but what is your background? And I blurted in Shakespeare, and the guy laughed on it. Yeah, no, really, what's your background? And Terry's background is Shakespeare. He is somebody who is a great writer, director, producer of Shakespearean plays, of other theater, a true Renaissance man who's not only produced great cultural works, but also has taken that into the activist arena as well. In terms of his work as an environmentalist, in 1993, he founded the Santa Monica Baykeeper, I know which is well-known around this horseshoe, and served as its Executive Director for six years. And then he co-founded waterkeeper programs in San Diego, Orange County, Ventura, and Santa Barbara, and he served as Executive Director of the Environment Now Foundation in Santa Monica, California. Terry Tammonen has long appreciated that oceans and his youth was a part of the most important part of his upbringing in Santa Monica Bay, and he later participated in his family-run tropical fish breeding business in Australia. He studied conch depletion in the Bahamas and manatee populations in Florida's coastal waters. He's also served as the Chair of the Public Advisory Committee to the Southern California Wetlands Recovery Project and served on the United States Navy Point Mugu Naval Air Station Restoration Advisory Board, the Los Angeles Long Beach Harbor Safety Committee, and on the Board of the Wachitoyo Foundation, a group that preserves natural resources through Trumash Indian traditional teachings. I know when Councilmember Reyes and I were at the Friends of the Los Angeles River Dinner, the speech that Terry Tammonen gave was one of the best speeches I've heard in my life, tying together why the environment is so important and how all the different strains of the environment, from water and air and parks, all come together. Michelle Kleiner is here on his behalf, and we'd like to present this to you for Terry and congratulate him for the great work that he's done.
Thank you.
On behalf of Terry, for getting the Interfaith Award, he being the Gentile, me being the Jew, I'm representing him, and everyone has spoken so kindly about all these people that are here in COJO and everybody that is award recipients. And he's out doing more than his share in protecting the environment. And just to echo what everybody else has said, is what he would want everybody to know is more valuable than any land, any jewels, anything that you can give, any property that you can give your kids, it's most important that you give them the land and the environment better than we've received it. And I know that he would make sure that that's what he's out doing now, is making sure that it's better than the way we received it. So thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
I do want to take a moment and just give this message to Terry for me, please. Eric is right. That was one of the most incredible speeches I heard, when he was able to highlight in one of his brilliant remarks that there is an actual, an element that is special to our atmosphere. It's an element that Jesus Christ probably was breathing in, and we recycle forever, and that in today's pollutants, we're killing that off as well amongst everything else that we're killing off in our atmosphere, that we are at a very, very limited timeframe when it comes to our existence. And when he framed it within the history of mankind, it was very poignant. And I just want to let him know that he made a very, very strong impression on many, many individuals that day, and I would love to see him move on in some greater roles. Just thank him for all his hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, for that. Our last honoree from these awards is Toyota. Toyota's honored today as the Business Environmentalist of the Year, and you need not go any further than two floors down from where we are right now into the city's garage to know about the impact that we can make through changing the way we approach motor vehicles. And I think most of you know the statistic by now, but last year was the first year we didn't pay more in our fuel costs in the city of Los Angeles, despite higher fuel costs, because we've moved so many of our vehicles to hybrid and alternative fuel vehicles. I myself am proud to drive a RAV4 that's an EV, and I know that many folks in this room drive Toyota Priuses, as well as other brand cars as well. You remember Toyota from the occasion, they are recognized from this podium, I think, for their part in National Public Lands Day, when thousands of Toyota volunteers took part in the largest one-day volunteer effort to renew and restore our nation's public lands, including cleaning up our city parks. Many of us also recognize those distinct hybrid cars downstairs. Starting October 1st in Los Angeles, you can park at meters for free with any hybrid vehicles. And these environmentally friendly, high-mileage cars have such a long waiting list that it's up to six months in some dealerships, because people want to do the right thing, they just need the options and need the car companies that produce those options well. And also because of state action, hybrids will be allowed into carpool lanes pending federal approval, even if you drive alone. In 1992, Toyota's Japan-based parent company, Toyota Motor Corporation, established its Global Earth Charter, which was a comprehensive effort to promote conservation activities and to protect the environment in all stages of the company's operations. So this program attends to the environmental impacts of development, design, manufacturing, and marketing of Toyota vehicles all the way through to their final disposal. Toyota's US arms sold over 1.8 million vehicles in 2003, making Toyota the fourth-largest automobile company here in the United States. And North American sales of the hybrid that I mentioned, the Prius, since its launch in July 2002 through September of this year exceeds 100,000 units. We hope that every other car company will follow their lead in introducing high-mileage hybrids. So it gives me great pleasure to thank Toyota, who is represented here today by Michael Love, and to hear from him as well. Congratulations.
Well, I would like to thank everyone for this honor on behalf of Toyota. I think that the actions of the council speak loudly with regard to its care for the environment. And I would also like to say that its support through the parking measure and others show that it's willing to walk the talk. The strongest signal a car company can receive is by people wanting to buy its product, and the reception we've received from when we've introduced our hybrid products has been, quite frankly, overwhelming, and we're struggling mightily to try to meet the demand that we have today. And so this recognition is very nice and very appreciative, and I'd just like to say that we will continue on in this path to try to introduce options to the public to drive more environmentally-friendly vehicles. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Again, Toyota's been tremendous. They've come out to my district, MacArthur Park, hundreds of Toyota employees came out one weekend and spent the day cleaning the park, cleaning the area. This year, they came out to Debs Park, Audubon Society, and again, hundreds of employees. And I needed to rise and just say thank you in public for all the great work Toyota's done for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Lee Wallach to close out this presentation. Lee is familiar to so many of us as one of the leading environmentalists in Los Angeles, man responsible for the COJO Awards. And also I wanted to recognize also Rebecca Wayne, District Director for Assemblymember Paul Coretts, who's a great defender and steward of our environment as well, who's here with us as well. But if we please welcome Lee Wallach.
Thank you all. I'll make this brief. You've heard my common spiel. I'd also like to, we have Saran Kersbaum, one of our members who has been in this office more than enough. Jessica Friedman, this work doesn't happen without our LA Interfaith and COJO staff. You folks have been amazing. Thank you for honoring these folks here today. These individuals really are our moral compass. They are teaching us what we need to be doing for our future. I hope that all of us continue to follow their lead, whether it's in a recycling program, whether it's a decision on who leads our Department of Water and Power, whether it's a decision on anything that we're doing, the towels we buy, the cars we drive. These are the people that really show us the way. Thank you to the whole council, to those who came, and obviously to Eric Garcetti, our partner in this effort this evening. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and...
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And may I have one more presentation?
Sure.
Do you have one more presentation?
Yes, with Councilmembers Reyes, Villarosa, and Ludlow.
While you guys prepare for that, let me do two things. First, let me ask the clerk to please call the roll. Oh, we did. Okay. Then let's go through the consent items. Getting ahead of ourselves here. First, sort of business, please.
Approve all the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Zine seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves, and Ms. Msakowski seconds.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held. On Item 9, the Rules and Election Committee has submitted their report.
Okay. Members, Items 1 through 9 now before us, and public hearings have been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have requests for specials? Ms. Msakowski.
Item 2.
Item 2, call special by Ms. Msakowski. Any other specials? Items 1 through 9, seeing none, let's open the roll. On Items 1 and 3 through 9, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items 10 through 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members, Items 10 through 19 now before us, without objection, I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Any specials on 10 through 19? Mr. Zine.
17.
17, call special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Members, Item 20 is a closed-session item. Hold it out on the desk. We also have a Speaker card in Item 20. This is it for the consent item. Let's come back to presentations. At the conclusion of presentations, we'll come back, take general public comment, and then the items called special. Back to you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And for a final presentation, I'm joined here by Councilmembers Villarosa, Ludlow, and Reyes to celebrate declaring October as Filipino-American History Month. So mabuhay, welcome, and we will be celebrating this entire month of October Filipino-American All of the council members up here, and indeed every single council member around this horseshoe, has Filipino-Americans that live here. They're the largest ethnic group out of, that traces its heritage to Asia in Los Angeles and the largest Asian-American group in the United States now as well. And not only have we made history recently in the creation of historic Filipino town, but we can trace the impact and the connection between our city and the Philippines for centuries. Indeed, it was in October 18th, 1587, that a group of Filipinos landed on the shores of Morro Bay and the central coast of California as part of the Spanish galleon trade. And the Filipino-American National Historical Society, because of that date, in 1988 declared October as Filipino-American History Month in commemoration of the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence in the United States. In our own city, we know that there were two Filipinos that were written about as chinos in Spanish by the Spanish crown, who are the original pobladores who set out from Baja California to found this city. And indeed, since then, the contributions of Filipinos and Filipino-Americans here in Los Angeles has been manifold. For this month, we have a number of folks that have joined us, first and foremost, of course, from the Filipino government, Marciano Painer, who is our Council General, and we welcome him. And we'll be hearing from him in a second. I also want to thank the Filipino-American Society of Architects and Engineers, Efren Abritik, who many of us know as a great leader in this city, Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, that I know is well-represented, in some cases by our staffs here, and today by Edna Brown from the Controller's Office. We also have Peter Corpus from the Search to Involve Filipino Americans, or CIPA, Johnny Picaio, who's right there for the Manila U.S. Times, Rose Ivaniz, who wears a couple hats here, but from the Filipino-American Library and Legislative Deputy for Councilmember Ludlow, Abigail Tapang Treanor from the Filipino-American Bar Association, the Filipino-American Library as well, Michelle Magalong, the Vice President of FANHS, and Cecil Ramos, various Filipino-American Los Angeles City employees that are here, and of course, the indomitable Yay, was Yay here, from the mayor's office, who we all know and love, David as well from Councilmember Ludlow's office, and Sam Belucas, President of FANHS, the Historical Society and a longtime resident of Los Angeles. I'd like to go with protocol and ask our Council General first to say a couple words and then turn it over to Marciano, sorry, to Sam to say some things from the Historical Society, but first, I'd like to turn this over to my colleagues to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, and thank you to all of the leaders from the Filipino-American community who are here today. As I said earlier, Mr. Garcetti, in another presentation, I had the great opportunity to represent a large portion of this community, both in Eagle Rock and the Temple Bodri area and the Hollywood area when I was a member of the State Assembly. This is a community I know well. And you took my lines right from me. Those two pobladores who were a part of the beginnings of Los Angeles in many ways represent... represent what L.A.'s all about and the important contributions of this community to the growth and vitality of the city. I also would like to say, because I know they're here in spirit, something about the Filipino-American veterans. We know that those of us who know history and the contributions of the Filipino-American people, there were veterans who, on a commitment by the United States government, fought for this country in the Philippines, sacrificed their lives, walked and marched in that horrible March of Batan, and our country never kept its commitment and its promise. And so when we celebrate this History Month, we need to know that, and we need to commit ourselves to ensuring that one day, this government will keep its promise to the Filipino-American veterans. Thank you for having this day, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti. I'll be very, very brief because we're anxious to hear from our Consul General. It's just an honor to be a part of Filipino Awareness Month and the historical library celebration that we just had the other week. I want to congratulate Rose Ibanez, who works on my staff, for her work. And one thing that I know that both Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Viragosa have always reminded is that cultural pride is American pride. American pride is cultural pride. It is so wonderful to acknowledge the diversity of this nation, the contributions of the Filipino community is without doubt an important part of the fabric of not only L.A.'s history but American history. And so just real honored to stand, and as Filipino-Americans watch you on Channel 35 right now, I hope they're feeling that pride as we are. Thank you.
I also want to join my colleagues in celebrating the great Filipino-American History Month. Been very fortunate to work very closely with the Filipino community in my district, in my staff. I want to thank Ruby Rivera, who works on my staff, as well as Gerald Gubatan, and all the Filipinos in the City of L.A.'s employees who have been able to raise the occasion, become those role models, and demonstrate to all the communities, especially those in our districts, that struggle to get through high school, to get into college, to be able to instill that pride in our culture. And like our colleagues have said, through these kinds of role models, we continue to improve our future. And I want to thank the leadership of the Filipino-American community organizations for being there for our youth and for our future. Have a great month. Let's continue celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, the Honorable Members of the Los Angeles Council, friends, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the thousands of Filipino-Americans who live here in the City of Los Angeles, and for the countless other hundreds of thousands, and in fact, 2 million Filipino-Americans who live now in the United States and have made the United States their home, we wish to express our most sincere appreciation to you all, and especially to the City of Los Angeles, for recognizing the contributions of the Filipinos who have made the United States their home, especially Los Angeles. All we can do is to assure you that they, the Filipino-Americans, will continue to be good citizens of this country, of this city, and for wherever they are, and they shall continue to contribute positively to the growth of this city. And we assure you of our utmost cooperation, our support to all of you. Again, from all of our hearts, from all of the Filipinos in the Philippines, we express to you our most sincere thanks and appreciation. Thank you very much.
If I could ask Sam to step forward from the Historical Society to say a couple words as well.
My name is Sam Belucas, and I go way back in California. In fact, I'm one of the natives, born in Stockton and raised in California. Now, to put my involvement in Philippine-American National Historical Society in proper perspective, my parents came here in 1926, 1927. They're considered first generation from the Philippines, but I'm considered first-generation American-born. And what we did is the organization was started by children of the people that came here in the 20s and early 30s. And what we've done is documented the history of our parents and the things that they've gone through growing up and raising their families in the United States, being one of the first. And I've done that with my own. I'm in the process of documenting my own history for my children and my grandchildren. And that's one reason I stayed involved in this, because we have, every two years, we have a national conference, and these papers and these documents that are gathered are presented to the Filipinos throughout the United States. We're a nationwide organization. We've got 23 chapters throughout the United States, and we're happy to be Filipinos and part of the American scene.
On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, all my colleagues, it gives us great pleasure to be able to present this certificate to you to commemorate Filipino-American History Month. May we redouble our efforts for justice, for knowledge, for culture, and for greater understanding. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, and Councilman Reyes, and Mr. Viragosa, and Mr. Ludlow. Next, I think Mr. Smith had an introduction. Mr. Smith, did you have an introduction?
I'm busy talking.
Oh, okay, that's all right. Then, okay, well, then let us recognize Mr. Ludlow for his second presentation.
Colleagues, we have a person who's never been in these chambers before, and so we're going to sort of explain the process to him. I'm here to recognize Councilmember Nate Holden. Let's give him a round of applause. We were showing him around here in the back a little bit and trying to explain where things are, and somehow, he knew it all. This is a real honor for me. As you heard earlier today, we have an exciting night tonight. Nate Holden, in his last few years here in the Los Angeles City Council, with the support of his colleagues, helped earmark funding for what is going to be, I believe, most amazing performing arts center anywhere in Los Angeles. If you haven't had a chance to see it, you ought to come by 4718 West Washington Boulevard. This facility is second to none. It is a multimillion-dollar, state-of-the-art performing arts center that rests on the site of the Ebony Showcase Theater, which so many of you remember was one of the only venues in Hollywood that African-American entertainers could come to showcase their talent. I'm not going to take his speech from him. I'm sure he's going to reflect on some of those. But I wanted to bring him in here today for a couple of reasons. One is that, as we open the celebration tonight, people should be aware that all week long, this has been a celebration. We started on Monday with a luncheon in honor of Councilmember Nate Holden, and we did it on the stage of the Performing Arts Center, and it was a wonderful, wonderful luncheon. Many of his colleagues came through, people that have worked with him over the years, Yvonne Brathwaite Burke, Speaker Herb Wesson. Mike Hernandez was there on behalf of Councilmember Bernard Parks and Jan Perry, and representing himself, quite frankly, as a former colleague of Nate Holden. But then on Saturday, on Tuesday, we did a seniors' day at the Performing Arts Center, where hundreds of seniors came from throughout the 10th District to enjoy the likes of Linda Hopkins and Live Jazz. Then on Wednesday, we had over 1,000 young people from the local elementary schools who literally had a chance, councilmen, to walk to a performing arts center for the first time in their life. They were able to walk from their grade school to this beautiful performing arts center. And for those of you who would have seen, could have seen this, it was just an amazing thing. The kids had such a wonderful time. Then tonight, as I mentioned, is a black tie gala, where we're hoping many of you from the council will be there. As you heard today, Glenn Turman is performing, and then jazz guitarist Norman Brown will be doing a concert live on the stage tonight. Then tomorrow is Community Day, and if anything Nate Holden stood for was a sense of community. We've invited all of the block clubs, neighborhood associations, and neighborhood councils to come in and enjoy performances in this wonderful, wonderful, wonderful facility. And so I wanted to bring him in despite the fact that I think one of his proudest accomplishments is this Performing Arts Center, seeing him walk on the stage with his grandchildren and his children. I know that two things that he holds particularly near and dear to his heart is when he was on the council here, passing one of the first bans on assault weapons anywhere in the United States of America, and prior to that, when he served in the state legislature, his work to stop redlining in the insurance industry and banking industry. And so with that, I hope for those of you that are in earshot of the microphone in the chambers, will join me in a thunderous applause as we present this plaque to the great, the honorable Nate Holden.
Thank you very much, Councilman Ludlow, and each and every one of you for this nice plaque here and the honors that you're bestowing on me today. I want to just, once again, wish the councilman a happy birthday.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to see he did 10 push-ups to represent the 10th District. And I think he really got the idea in the Martin Luther King Parade. I was in front of his Martin during the parade, and I was doing four or five push-ups per block. So if you have 20 blocks, seemed like I did a lot of push-ups. But today, I'm not going to do any. But in any case, this Performing Arts Center that you supported over the years is going to serve not only the people of the 10th District but the entire city. I would say that it's a replica of the Disney Hall. You should see it, and then you'll know what I really, what I'm talking about. And I must tell you that the school kids, they had about 1,000 school kids, you had close to that of senior citizens, and they all just was waiting for this facility to open, and they'd been waiting for about 12 years. Because it took 12 years to get it completed, from start to finish. And that's why term limits are not very good. And if I could do anything to change that, to assist you along the way, be assured that that's one of my top priorities. Because many projects that you start to work on here, you will not get a chance to finish before your term is up. Tonight's going to be a great affair. I want to thank Mr. Ludlow and his staff and the Department of Cultural Affairs and all those who made this possible. The event that they provided for me on Monday, their luncheon, honoring me for things that I enjoy doing so very much, is something that made me very, very happy. I know each of you who were elected. The thing that rewards me the most is not that I get a paycheck once a month or once every two weeks how often you get paid. I forgot, I've been gone so long. But the fact of the matter is that when they can say, "Thank you for your job that you've done," and the community thanks each and every one of you because that which I've been able to accomplish, not only for erecting that center, Performing Arts Center, but the other projects in the area, could not have been done without your support and your vote. And thank you very much, Councilman Ludlow, and we'll see you this evening, and we'll get done.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. I just wanted to know when you learned to observe the three-minute rule.
Well, and I just will close with this, colleagues. Again, for those of you that haven't had a chance to see this facility, you really should make your way down there. This is going to be a sight. I want to thank Ron Deaton and Mike Hernandez, the General Services Department, Cultural Affairs, BUTOVERM, and the CRA. They've all played a major role in helping get Nate Holden's vision to life. And when you come down there and see this facility, I don't think there's one amongst you that will not be as in awe as we are of this facility. It really is something to see as a city building that has the architecture, the unique aspects, the sound system, and the audiovisual capacities. It's just something that the whole city family should be very, very proud of. And so, Councilman Holden, we really appreciate you for your extraordinary vision that you had years ago to see something like this as an opportunity for L.A., and it has come to pass, and tonight, we're going to open it up in grand fashion. Congratulations.
And I want to thank the councilmen and this entire City Council and CRA board for naming it the Nate Holden Performing Arts Center. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Councilmembers Ludlow and Councilman Holden. Our next presentation will be by Councilmember Dennis Zine.
Thank you. And I think that last matter with Councilman Holden was called "Special," a special presentation for our former colleague. I have a special presentation and a very worthy, worthy cause, and I'm going to have Charlie Tuna from KBIG 104.3 on your FM dial. We hear Charlie every morning. And the honorary mayor of Tarzana, California. And also, we have a presentation that we're going to present to the director of the Children's Miracle Network, Tommy Munji, and his family is here, his whole family is here. Tommy, come on up and join me, please. And also, we have producer of Charlie's program, Heather Case. Producer, come on up, producer, and bring the whole family up. Let's bring everybody up. Producer Heather, we hear you on the radio laughing, so come on up, we can see you. I was listening to the radio one Saturday afternoon, and I oftentimes listen to Charlie Tune in the morning on KBIG 104.3 on your FM dial. And I'm listening on the Saturday afternoon, I hear Charlie. Now Charlie's the morning drive man, and I'm listening in the afternoon. Why is Charlie on the afternoon? Well, they decided to do a Tuna Radio-Thon, and I'm trying to connect this. Charlie was so moved by meeting a young lady by the name of Paige Peterson, an 11-year-old child battling cancer. And she was supposed to be here today, but sadly, she's taken ill again. He decided to do a Radio-Thon at KBIG. It was a three-day Radio-Thon, and Charlie worked day and night on this Radio-Thon and raised $400,000 for Children's Hospital. That's what Charlie Tuna did. And the folks at the network were very, very supportive. And I heard the broadcast, I called in, made a contribution, and afterwards said, "We need to bring Charlie down and bring the folks from Children's Hospital down and recognize what he did," because he was so moved by the meeting with the young 11-year-old Paige Peterson and trying to help the children. And we have many hospitals closing in this region, but Children's Hospital Los Angeles is taking great care of seriously ill patients and giving them the best care possible. Children's Hospital was founded in 1901. For more than a century, they have been helping people not only in Los Angeles but throughout the United States and throughout the world. Treats nearly 58,000 patients a year in the emergency department and admits over 10,800 children a year to the hospital, with almost 50% of those admissions children under four years of age. Children's Hospital Los Angeles has been a member of the Children's Miracle Network since 1983, and this organization has helped raise millions of dollars for more than 170 affiliated hospitals throughout North America. And Tommy Munji, the director of Children's Miracle Network, has raised more than $10 million for Children's Hospital Los Angeles on his path from executive accountant to the director, and Tommy is the director of that wonderful Children's Miracle Network. And Charlie Tuna in KBIG 104, again, touched by Paige Peterson, who was a patient, and decided to put this Radio-Thon together. Paige, bravery, strength, and spirit moved Charlie so greatly that he decided to do this Radio-Thon to benefit all the children at Children's Hospital. And I want to offer my congratulations, and Charlie, anytime I ask him to do something in our community, he is there, he is willing, he's our emcee for our annual Fourth of July fireworks show at Warner Center Park. And Charlie is a wonderful, wonderful representative of the media that does good for the people of Los Angeles, the children of Los Angeles. And Charlie's been in radio business for a number of years. He is a legend in the City of Los Angeles, and he's a resident of the San Fernando Valley, the honorary mayor of Tarzana, and he is lowering taxes, business taxes, all taxes in Los Angeles. Charlie Tuna is responsible for lowering taxes. That's the kind of mayor that Charlie Tuna is. Wendy Grill, you hear that? Charlie Tuna's going to lower the business tax in Los Angeles. So I have a resolution here, signed by all of the councilmembers, our mayor, city attorney, controller, everyone involved in operating the City of Los Angeles. Charlie thanking you and acknowledging you for the Radio-Thon that raised $400,000 for those youngsters at Children's Hospital, and keep up that good work. And Tommy, Tommy, I have a resolution for you for what you have done with the Children's Miracle Network, Children's Hospital, and all the -- Miracle Network, Children's Hospital, and all that you've done to help youngsters around not only the city of Los Angeles, the state of California, but the world. And both of you have hearts of gold, you're always reaching out and helping people, and your family here to see, you acknowledged this morning, to show what wonderful work you do and how we appreciate it as elected officials in the city of Los Angeles. So Charlie, you're going to go first because you're the voice of KBIG. Tommy, you're going to go second.
Mr. Sein.
Oh, we got some people who want to speak.
I think Mr. Smith is going to go first. Let me recognize Councilmember Greg Smith.
Thank you. I want to rise in support of this and thank Charlie Tuna. Now Charlie doesn't remember me, but in 1977, I was president of a group called the North Hills Jaycees. And when, 1977, we started a project called The Factory of Nightmares. And over five years, Charlie Tuna was the voice of The Factory of Nightmares at Kiss FM. And we raised a quarter million dollars a year when Charlie was there for neighborhood programs in the San Fernando Valley for children and needy families and handicapped kids. And so Charlie, good to see you again. I'm glad you're still doing it, and you picked a new charity. God bless you because Children's Hospital is one of the greatest institutions in the western United States, and we're all very supportive of it. But I want to congratulate you on your continued life commitment to this city and the people and the children in particular, and it's good to see you again. Thank you so much for your continuous support.
Thank you very much. It's always an honor to come down here to the city council chambers. And I mean, it's just the aura of LA City Council. And I'm a cornhusker at heart. I grew up in Nebraska, but I moved out here to LA when I was 23-years-old, and I've been here in LA radio now for 37 years. And it's, it's one of these cities you just, I love. I love LA. I mean, I could have written that song myself. And so anytime you get to come downtown where everything happens, it's always, it's a big deal for me. And one of the things too about a big deal is I've done all sorts of concerts and all sorts of charity work, and, but this Children's Hospital, being there and seeing and meeting Paige and her parents and seeing the courage and the bravery of this young lady, and she just has the greatest smile in the world, and in her eyes, you can just see the sparkle, and you'd never know that what she goes through every day, the battle that she's fighting. And it's just a child like that, and then seeing all the children and all the parents who are down there at Children's Hospital, you think you have problems until you get around all these kids. And you suddenly realize everything you have going on with your fighting traffic on the freeways, or I know some of the agendas that you have here as city council members. You get it down to the bottom line of their health and kids like these, you just can't help but want to do something. So this is only the first of what we hope is going to be an annual event. We are planning on another one already next year. We're raising funds for Children's Hospital. And I look forward to many more years working with them. And of course, with Councilman Sein, we always have a good time out there at Warner Park on the Fourth of July. Forty thousand people showed up for Councilman Sein. He rescued what, we didn't have a fireworks display really in the valley, and he rescued us and started this thing at Warner Park, and it's become huge. I mean, it was a turnaway crowd last year, and I expect we're going to have to find a bigger place sooner or later here. But thank you very much, Councilman Sein and the LA City Council for this honor.
Thank you.
I'll mention, I was watching my colleague, Councilmember Smith, smile at that because there's a wonderful fireworks event at the church on Rinaldi, Shepherd of the Hills. I think what we're going to end up having is one humongous fireworks show between the whole valley. We'll combine them together. Tommy, Tommy, your turn.
I am humbly thank all of you for this lovely award. I would tell you that I'm the oldest of nine grandchildren, of four brothers and sisters. My younger brother and sister, they were born nine and 10-years after me, so I was, I was there and can remember when they were born. And the first question my grandfather asked as my dad came out was, "Are they healthy? Is he healthy?" Or, "Is she healthy?" As my younger sister was born. And being 10, I thought that was a stupid question. I wanted to know if it was a boy or a girl. I wanted to know if I got a brother. I didn't the first time, but the second time I did. But I always thought it was a dumb question until I stood in Children's Hospital Los Angeles as a young Marriott manager, and my heart was broken by what I saw. I quit that day and begged for a job at Children's Hospital, and that was five and a half years ago now. I love that place. I believe in passion, and you should be passionate about everything that you do, otherwise it's not worth doing. Working there is worth doing every day. We mentioned Paige. I was with her last night. And the only thing that stinks about working there is the reality of life, and that is that she is battling for her life. So I just want to thank you. I, I'm going to accept this on behalf of the 757 kids treated at our hospital last year in Tarzana and dedicated to Paige. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, Charlie. I just want to remind our viewers that on December 5th, there is a motorcycle run, a toy run to Children's Hospital. It starts in the San Fernando Valley on Vario. Arnie Rubin started this a number of years ago, I'm now involved in it. And we have thousands of motorcycle riders that bring toys. We caravan from the San Fernando Valley over Coinga Pass, down Sunset Boulevard, hundreds of motorcycles escorted by the LAPD, and we finally meet at Children's Hospital, meet the children and pass out toys. So we welcome anyone and everyone in Los Angeles to join us on that. Last year, we had over a thousand motorcycle riders, and hopefully this year we'll have more. Again, that's December 5th. And I'm going to have Charlie on the back of my Harley Davidson as we cruise to Children's Hospital. Charlie will be there, we'll be doing it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sein. Our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Ed Reyes.
I want to thank our guests for their patience. I'm here to, one, recognize both the private sector and our police force for the great work they've been doing. You know, around this time, we're going to start installing cameras in the Hollywood area. I can share with you that MacArthur Park, we've had cameras there for six months. We now have a place in which children are actually coming to the park, families are enjoying it. We were over there in Echo Park this morning, and the personnel that takes care of MacArthur Park is saying, "Councilman, what a difference. People now can enjoy the park, they can now enjoy the open space, and there's a diversity there that was never seen there before, that truly reflects the improvement of quality of life." And it wouldn't have been made possible without the camera program that's monitored by the ALAPD officers of the Rampart Division and General Electric Security Division, which donated the cameras. We're here to honor Hamilton Pacific six months later, because this is the time they could find to join us. And although it is six months later, it's still very pertinent, because now this type of approach and strategy is going to be spreading throughout the city. And much more today, it is relevant because of daylight savings times. It's going to be getting darker earlier, and the impact of the cameras is going to be, make that much more of a change. So I want to thank all those who made it possible. I am pleased to present this certificate to Steve Reinhards of Hamilton Pacific, who will be accepting the certificates on behalf of General Electric. And I want to welcome him and have him join us here at the microphone, but thank him for his great work, his company's great work and their contribution. Steve, the microphone is yours. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Reese. On behalf of Hamilton Pacific, we want to extend our sincere thanks to Councilman Reese and his staff, Chief Bratton, Chief Gascon, Captain Beck from Rampart Division, Captain Beck's staff, including Sergeant Dan Gomez, who's here with us this afternoon, Senior Lead Officer Michael Wang. These are the people that helped put this project together. On behalf of a, of a commercial enterprise, of a private commercial enterprise that's been working in the city of Los Angeles for the last 27 years, on behalf of our 220 employees, it gives us great honor to be able to participate in such a project that is hopefully going to have a continuing lasting impact throughout the city. So I thank you very much.
Mr. Parks also wanted to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to also say thank you for what you're doing. As I mentioned to you earlier, a few years ago, a similar proposal was made, and at that time, the city wasn't prepared to deal with that because of concerns about the technology and a variety of things. But to see what's going on at the MacArthur Park, that we've had a tenuous relationship for years, where we've cleaned it up and it's gone bad, and it's cleaned it up and it's gone bad, to have something to where you can actually monitor that activity, to hear that Newton Division will soon be doing that and other activities, and we'll throw Exposition Park on your, on your front burner to think about, because that's a great density area for the 8th district. And so, we just think that technology is something that we should embrace, find a way to incorporate it to where it's a major tool for law enforcement to be able to use, where you can monitor large areas that are densely populated, not have to have resources, human resources out and about in that area. So thank you for going forward on that and look forward to you spreading that across the city. And I, I never am in a public space, I want everybody to know who this young lady is right here, Sergeant Legaspi. Many of you, where my granddaughter was killed in the city of LA, she's the one that arrested the suspect just by being observant and being able to follow the crime, was able to see the suspect and made that arrest. I want to say thank you again.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Councilman Bernard Parks. I do want to take a moment to recognize Sergeant Dan Gomez, who's with us. I invited him to the microphone, but he politely said, "No, thank you." But I do want to acknowledge Chief Bratton for his proactivity, Mayor Han for his support. I won't forget the day Chief Bratton stepped out of the van with me when we stepped into the park. We actually saw a drug deal going down right in front of us. The posture he took, the way he dealt with the issue, and with the same coolness and that he was able to handle that particular incident is the same methodology and approach, along with Captain Beck, the Rampart Division, along with Sergeant Mike Wang, who's been a tremendous senior lead officer in the area. They have taken all the necessary steps. We only see better things happening around MacArthur Park with the support of the community. I want to thank everyone involved. Thank you very much.
I believe Mr. Ludlow would like to add a few words as well.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Reyes, I just wanted to first start by congratulating you and, and all of the representatives from the department. Last, two weeks ago, we had an event at Lafayette Park. And what I will never forget, the way in which the, the mothers came up and talked about what was happening in MacArthur Park, that they were now able to go take their kids there and enjoy it. And I just wanted to say, being in one park and having families come up and brag about another park that is closer to where they live, now being a place where their children can play, is what this is all about. And that is public service at its best, and I just want to congratulate the whole team. But in particular, Mr. Reyes takes leadership and a vision, and I really salute you. And I personally have seen the way that park has changed. And so it's just a job well done, job well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, and to the LAPD and the work you're doing there. Members, we are going to go into public comment period now, but first, let me indicate that we are down, we have 11 members, and we may be in danger of losing a quorum. So please, those who are not excused, please check with the chair before you leave. And if there's not any objection, item number two, which was called "Special," there's been a request to continue that for two weeks. So if there is no objection, we will take item two and continue that for two weeks and ask the Bureau of Engineer to report back on that. Let us now open public comment, and let me begin by calling Mr. Ted Hayes, Mr. Eliseo Villanueva, and Dan Sanchez. Would you please come forward at this time?
This is one of the most difficult things I've had to do in my life. Today, I've come before you not just as a homeless activist, but I come to you as a messenger, a mailman, a postman, bearing a message from the people of the 14th Councilatic District of Councilman Antonio Villagrosa. Many of you know me, I've a long time been actors for the homeless, for the, for justice in Los Angeles. And like all problems, they recognize, like all problems, they recognize no council or district boundaries. But I'm here this morning with my good friends, Eliseo Villanueva, Luis Marcias, two-time residents, two-long residents of the 14th district. Eliseo is a man of full compassion for those in our society who need help the most. He does much for the plight of the homeless as chairman of Dome Village and Justiceville Homeless USA Organization, the care for the less fortunate among us. Eliseo is a man concerned for the future, for the future of our city, and for the future of his council district of the 14th. Luis is a young man who is just beginning on his road to participation in political process. And they, together with the three others registered voters from the 14th district, have come together with a simple, single-minded purpose. They have formed a committee for the recall of council member Antonio Villagrosa. The statement of reasons for this recall petition, which is being served on the council member by certified mail, refers to the councilman's promise to the people of the 14th district that he would serve as their council member and represent their interest in this chamber for the full four-year term. That promise was the basis for his victory. It was the question every constituent asked, quote, "Will you stay here or run off and challenge the mayor again?" It was the question every journalist asked, but it was based on an unsolicited query. In other words, council member Villagrosa, you enforced the promise time and time again. And this is what Councilman Villagrosa answered to the 14th district to the journalists, quote, he said, "So, I am running for the council. I am not going to run for mayor in the next cycle. I'm gonna run for council. And should I, by the grace of God and hard work, get elected, I intend to be a council member for four years," end of quote.
Mr. Hayes, can I ask you to sum up? We have other people who would like to speak.
Yes, I'm sure you spent all morning doing your ceremony. This is a very historical moment, ma'am, and I would really appreciate that you respect the business of the people of Los Angeles and the 4th district. Thank you.
There are many other people who would like to have their business brought forward.
Yes, ma'am, I am aware of that, but please, would you be patient with the people of Los Angeles? You were patient with these ceremonies. Thank you. Well, it's now two, not even two years, and the councilman is running for mayor. He flat-out broke his promise. As John Curry, his friend, recently said in a speech in Florida, "The people should hold their elected officials accountable for what they say in campaigns," end of quote. And my friend Eliseo and his committee members, and we believe many thousands of others in the 14th district now hold Councilman Villagrosa accountable. I have in my hand a copy of the notice of intention to circulate a recall petition and statement of reasons. I also have copies of two of the many interviews Councilman Villagrosa gave last year where he assured no promise, the voters of the 14th district, he would stay for the four-year term. He flat-out broke his promise. And that is why Councilman Villagrosa, we, Councilman Villagrosa, will be recalled by the people of the 14th district. In fact, just yesterday, in an NBC poll, over 60% of respondents favored a recall, and we haven't even began to get our message out. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to introduce to you the chairman of the committee to recall Villagrosa, Eliseo Villanueva.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak here. My name's Eliseo Villanueva. I've been a longtime resident of the 14th district. Before I, I guess, get any questions, our recall has little to do with Antonio Villagrosa's effectiveness as a city councilman, and it has absolutely nothing to do with who should or shouldn't be our next mayor. But it has a lot to do with integrity. So let me explain why we are recalling the Councilman Antonio Villagrosa. He won his election to the city council in 2003 by promising that if he won, he would represent our district for a full four-year term. He also promised that he wouldn't run for mayor in 2005. Councilman Villagrosa made these promises at meetings, gatherings and debates and numerous interviews. We do have copies of the Nation Magazine as well as the LA Weekly. If anybody wants one, we have them. Okay. The question is, didn't Councilman Villagrosa beat incumbent Nick Pacheco because these promises made to the voters of the 14th district? I honestly don't know. But the question is this, why did Mr. Villagrosa feel that he had to make these promises? But the question is this, why did Mr. Villagrosa feel that he had to make these promises and then, as we know, break them when he announced his candidacy for mayor just a couple months ago? Now, during this election, uh, he's been working for the campaign of Kerry for the last, most of the year. When he gets done, when the elections are done, he's gonna be working for the, for his meritorial race. What about the 14th District? And that's the question, this is the reason why, uh, we're calling for this.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna ask you to conclude. We have other speakers. Thank you. All right, uh, we have Mr. Dan Sanchez.
Can this be delivered to, um, Mr. Villagrosa, please? Wanted the office.
We'll ask the Sergeant to take that. Uh, Mr. Dan Sanchez, who will be followed by, um, Alisa Avina Padilla and the folks representing the South Central Farmers, and then Mr. Candido Morris. Is Mr. Sanchez, yes, Mr. Sanchez, I think, is ready to speak.
Yes, my name is, uh, Dan Sanchez, and I am a Falun Gong practitioner. I'm here to bring your attention to two developments in the various efforts to stop the genocide against Falun Gong in China and the harassment and intimidation of US government officials by the Chinese government. Earlier this month, the House of Representatives unanimously passed House Concurrent Resolution 304 condemning the Chinese government's oppression of Falun Gong in both the United States and China. Resolution 304 concludes that the US Attorney General should investigate reports of Chinese consular officials in the US committing illegal acts against Falun Gong or local elected officials and decide on appropriate measures. It further resolves that local officials should report incidents of harassment or pressure by agents of the People's Republic of China to Congress, the Attorney General, and the Secretary of State. As you may already know, the agents of the PRC have done this with a former mayor of Los Angeles, as well as other mayors in California. A new multi-award movie has been recently released called Sandstorm. It will be playing this evening at 7:15 PM at the Lemel Fairfax Theater on Beverly Boulevard near Fairfax. It is a movie that the Chinese government does not want you to see. It has won eight awards this year and reveals the details of the Chinese government's brutal persecution of Falun Gong practitioners, as documented and condemned by human rights groups such as Amnesty International. On the day that Sandstorm was to play in Houston, the Chinese consulate called the festival director and the deputy director of the Houston Film Commission, demanding that they not play the movie. Although shaken by the brazen request, they were fully cognizant of the freedoms in our country and decided to show the movie anyway. It won Best Feature Film at the festival. It was because of incidents like this and many others that House Concurrent Resolution 304 was unanimously passed by Congress. Seeing and hearing Nate Holden reminded me of a motion he made, he and Councilman Ferraro in 1989 condemning China for the brutality against their own citizens during the Tiananmen Square massacre. I provided information on the movie Sandstorm in your offices and invite you to attend the showing this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speakers.
Mi nombre es María Magallón y vengo de, del Sur Central. Soy campesina de ahí y queremos estarnos ahí porque ahí cultivamos muchas plantas que yo ni siquiera conocía. Hoy no las comemos mis hijos y yo. Y pues queremos estarnos ahí siguiendo cultivando ese jardín. Y ahí estamos y no nos vamos. Gracias.
Hi, good afternoon. My, my name is María Magaña. I come here from South Central Garden. I'm a farmer. We plant plants, we plant food, not only for our children, but for other families. And we want to continue cultivating that garden. And we are here to tell you that we're here and we are not leaving.
Hola, mi nombre es Cristobal Bravo. Soy campesino del, del Sur Centro de Los Ángeles. Y ahí trabajo, de ahí es, comemos. Tengo un año trabajando para ese jardín. Quisiera quedarme ahí siempre. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Cristobal Bravo. I want to let you know that I'm a worker at that garden. We eat from that garden. I've been working there for one year and we want to ask you that, to let us stay there. We don't want to leave. Thank you.
Miguel Angel Pérez, Los Angeles Land Use Coalition, Boy Heights Neighborhood Alliance. Again, we're approaching one more year that everybody that puts a cornucopia of vegetables on their tables. One more time, campesinos, people who work the land, cultivate and farm and bring produce to your tables. You are all going to celebrate these holidays with food on your tables for yourselves and your families. It is the campesino who brings that to you. South Central Farm, 41st and Alameda, is part of that. Again, for the record, aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Tierra libertad. Gracias.
Thank you. Candido Morris will be our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just want to thank the mayor and hopefully the council for the early Christmas gift. When I went out and, uh, picked up my newspaper and there it was, Mr. Deaton nominated for DWP. And you know how strongly I feel about that. But I've sat and stood over in this corner for over 14 years, and the one thing I know are the people that love this city, that are dedicated and are smart. Mr. Deaton meets all those requirements. So, I hope that you'll confirm quickly and that we'll get an earlier Christmas gift. And Mr. Deaton, we thank you for your service.
Thank you, Candido. That now closes public hearing. Mr. Clerk, let's go through the items that were called special.
Item 17 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Uh, let me recognize Mr. Zine.
I'm going to, uh, have my distinguished colleague, Councilmember Gruhl, who was out of the room when I called that special. I know she wants to discuss this, so I'm going to give my time to Councilmember Gruhl on this very important measure.
Councilmember Gruhl.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. I appreciate that. And, uh, we are, are partners in crime on this, along with, uh, Councilmember Padilla and many other members of the City Council. Colleagues, um, we read in the paper today and, and many of you who received the report from Chief Bratton, uh, know that we need, uh, at a minimum, 3,000 additional police officers to give us, uh, the minimum we need to keep our communities safe. We have an opportunity on Tuesday to vote for Measure A, uh, which would give the city of Los Angeles over 1,200 new officers. I'm standing here today because people have asked me, what is this motion, how does it relate to, uh, the Proposition A? But what I want to say to you today is that to get to that 3,000 number, to get to that 3,000 number, we need to pass Proposition, uh, excuse me, Measure A to put more officers on the street in our neighborhoods. But we need to go further. Uh, I was reading this, um, report over, uh, last night, uh, late, um, and I highlighted a couple of items, I think, that are really important that were quoted, um, in the report. The LAPD has long been over, excuse me, understaffed and overmatched by the sheer expanse of its service area. Few other major American cities with high crime have fewer officers than Los Angeles in terms of ratio to both population and land area. Compared to America's other great cities, Los Angeles has one-half the number of police officers as New York per capita and one-sixth the number of officers per square mile. Los Angeles has one-half the number of police officers as Chicago per capita and one-third the number of officers per square mile. That is a very serious, uh, statistic, I believe, as we're looking to make Los Angeles one of the safest cities. And I think that the other part of the chief's report says, "Never has the LAPD been realistically and correctly sized to succeed in its mission of making every city neighborhood safe through lawful and respectful policing. Never has the LAPD been at a size that would assure officers have sufficient numbers to handle any emergency and protect each other while they do." So, what we're saying today is, we need to pass Proposition A, but we also need to go further. We must do our part to fund an additional 1,700 officers. This is not an either-or situation. We need to do both. The shortage of police officers is so dire that we must do everything we can to put more officers in our neighborhoods. We need to respond to Chief Bratton's call and give him the, the people of Los Angeles more officers. We need to do our part to make a commitment to fund additional officers. Uh, so, this motion today asks us to work with the CAO and the CLA and the city attorney to come back with efficiency measures, uh, so that we can begin to add additional officers. Um, again, want to state that, uh, we need to do both. Uh, pass Proposition A on Tuesday, uh, but also be more efficient here in the city of Los Angeles. So, what I'd like us to do today, um, is adopt, um, a motion, uh, this motion in concept and refer it to the Audits and Governance Efficiency Committee for the CAO and the CLA and city attorney to come back, uh, to develop the trust fund and definitions of efficiency measures. Um, I'm pleased to, to stand here again with my colleagues, um, Dennis Zine and Councilmember Alex Padilla, uh, that, uh, we thought this was critically important to send a message that we want to do our part in addition to asking, uh, the taxpayers to support us on Tuesday for Proposition A. So, I would ask for an "I" vote today. Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes.
I just want to be emphatic in that we are looking at new plans for new stations. We, there's two in my district that are being, right now, actually designed. We've gone through a lot of community input processes. But what I want to make clear to the community, it doesn't mean we're gonna have more personnel. What it means, we're gonna spread out our personnel, we're gonna make it more effective and trying to get from point A to point B and get closer to the hotspots. But it doesn't mean more personnel. So, the calling that's coming from my colleagues is very crucial. Let's be very clear that new stations does not mean more personnel. It means more effective, more strategic locations, and we need more personnel in this effort. So, I just want to echo and emphasize the need to increase our presence by increasing the number of officers out in the field. Thank you.
Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, colleagues, wanted to rise and, uh, not only be in support of this motion, but ask for your support as well. As Councilmember Gruhl articulately stated, uh, we need two things. We need Measure A, and we need this motion. Uh, if you talk to Chief Bratton, as many of us have done over the course of the last couple of years, and many voters have done certainly, uh, over the last couple of months as we've been putting out, uh, the word of why we need their help, uh, you'll hear that Chief Bratton believes we need another 3,000 officers in the department. Uh, this is not a yes on Measure A speech, so our city attorney can rest assured, uh, but let me say this, with Measure A, although it'll be a significant, significant help and we need, uh, the officers that would be funded through that measure, it still doesn't get us to the point where Chief Bratton needs us to be. That's the bottom line. And so, the very valid question that I've gotten from community members is, well, Measure A gets us to this point, what's the plan for getting us the rest of the way? To what Chief Bratton says he needs to significantly reduce, uh, crime and violence in our city by another 50%. Uh, and so, that's what this motion asks for. It asks for the CAO, the CLA, the LAPD to come together and develop a plan for how we get there. Pretty simple question. And I think for, uh, we should be a little embarrassed that we haven't asked that question before and haven't developed a plan before. But that being said, we're at the point where we can and should develop such a plan. In the motion, uh, we, we talk about what the cities, uh, the city can do on its end to increase efficiencies, increase cost savings, and redirect some of those additional resources towards this goal of reaching a police department, uh, of, uh, more than 12,000 officers. So, uh, I'd ask for your support of this motion. Want to thank Councilmember Gruhl because it's been a wonderful partnership in developing it up until this point, and we have our work cut out for us going forward. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. I noticed that there's Gruhl, Zine, Padilla, the Three Valley folks, and, uh, Councilmember Ed Reyes, the east side of our beautiful city. Uh, you mentioned about new police stations. I learned recently that when a bond measure is passed, a library bond measure, a fire station bond measure, a police station bond measure, that includes no personnel. And that's one of the big problems is, the voters will support the infrastructure, but we need to staff the infrastructure. And what they're gonna do for the North Valley Station in Councilmember Padilla's district is they're gonna be taking officers from different divisions around the city. Councilmember Han mentioned recently that they're gonna take 35 officers out of Harbor, and they're gonna be redeploying, and a lot of other divisions are gonna lose some personnel to staff the North Valley Station, which is critically important to staff. We're gonna have another station open up in Mid-Wilshire, another station open up, uh, Canoga and Roscoe. So, we have other stations that are done. And also with Measure A, that people need to recognize in the 2012, the Board of Supervisors can review that, that half-cent sales tax. The city attorney's getting ready to jump up and scream. But in that measure, 2012, which is a few years down the road, they have the option to review. What we need is we have a housing trust fund, and a housing trust fund to help people with residence. But if you don't have a safe residential neighborhood, then you're not gonna have people living there. So, this is a very important element, that we do the exploration, we find that this is a priority. We keep hearing about priorities in this city, and if public safety is not the number one priority, then I don't know what is. So, I strongly support this. It's a measure in the right direction, and people are looking to say, "What are you doing to establish that safe environment, that priority you keep talking about?" And this accomplishes that. So, I would, uh, request that we all support this, and whatever happens November 2nd happens November 2nd. But we need to maintain public safety, and we need to maintain the staffing in the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you.
Councilmember Ledlow.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. I, um, just to be very brief, I remember, uh, Councilmember Parks had asked, uh, maybe a year ago for the city to look for funding for, um, some of our gang intervention programs. And I, I applaud, uh, Councilmember Gruhl and, uh, Mr. Zine and, and others. And I stand in support of this, but I wanted to also, uh, I just spoke with, uh, with Ms. Gruhl, uh, about their willingness to also look at the issue of gang intervention. And the only reason I raise it on this item is because we're talking about government efficiency and trying to find areas of the city where there's additional resources to go to desperately needed programs. Uh, when I talk to a lot of the senior leads in my district, as well as the gang, um, officers from our gang enforcement teams, they really are wondering, "What are we doing to continue to add to the resources for gang intervention?" And there's a real need for that. On the prevention side, we have LA Bridges, um, and, uh, on the, uh, sort of suppression side, we have LAPD. But, but we have really lost over the last 15 years, a real, real hardcore commitment to the intervention component. And, um, it's hard, it's hard not to address that on a motion like this. Um, and so, I would just hope that the authors of this would be willing to, when you take this into committee and you look at it, find a way that if we're going to look at using city resources and move it over, that we also take a look at anything we can do to add to the, uh, the gang intervention side. Uh, because we are experiencing not a decrease, decreasing number of gang members, we're experiencing an increasing number. And a lot of the crime, as we've been seeing through some of the, uh, great data that's been coming out of LAPD, is that a very small number of gang members are committing an amazing amount of the majority of violent crimes in our district. And so, I just want to make sure that, uh, we're not failing to see the need for, uh, professional intervention components, and would just encourage the authors of this, as I stand in support of this motion, to look at this in committee for anything that we could do to add some, some, uh, language about, uh, gang intervention funding. Uh, Colts, uh, Community Development Department, Robert Science and everybody that are there, they're working miracles with very, very little funding. And, um, I know that they, uh, could do much greater work at reducing the number of gang incidents in the city of LA if they had resources. So, again, I'm very, very big opponent of Measure A. Applaud Sheriff Baca, applaud the leaders on this floor that have fought to, uh, get that measure through. I'm hopeful that it does pass. Uh, I stand here as a strong, strong supporter, supporter of the men and women in blue. Um, they're out there putting their lives on the line every day, but I also know that we've got some serious needs that are not being met on gang intervention. So, I would, uh, rise in support, but would hope that the authors would take a look at this as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Labange.
I move the previous question.
The matter is now before us. The... The motion recommending reports back from CLA, CAO, and the department. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved. We will send it forthwith. Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to move forthwith on item number 19.
All right.
I'm not sure if this is appropriate, to ask this time to request the opportunity for public comment by regarding item number 20. I would like to follow your lead on how we can approach that issue.
I believe item 20 is the next item on our agenda. It is a closed session, but Mr. Reyes has requested or made a motion that we take a limited public hearing on item 20. There are three cards to speak before we go into closed session.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanted to share with my colleagues, I need you to hear what these folks are going to say. I'm very, very bothered, I'm disappointed, quite frankly, I'm very upset in how we got here. This is an item that was, we were granted a notice of entry of judgment on September 1st, 60 days ago. The city attorney, I believe, in many, many instances, have done a great job in many of the aspects of our legal advice and work. But today, we're being given advice, we're given guidance, two or three days before we have to make a decision. It's a critical issue regarding housing, the rental issue in the city. We know it's a grave issue, and to be given very little or no time to understand, digest, have a discussion is not acceptable. The city attorney is our advisor, we work with them, they are our guide, and for this to happen is just not right. I made it clear in committee, I don't feel this should happen again, but I'd like to provide the opportunity for these folks to give them, give us their perspective.
All right. Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Reyes. Is there any objection to a limited public hearing? Seeing none, let me call three speakers and ask you to be brief. Mr. Mark Skibinski, Alisa Lina Garrett, and Rod Field. Please come forward.
Mr. Chair and councilmembers, my name is Mark Skibinski. I am 79 years old, live in Los Angeles, with my wife, one-bedroom apartment, and have Section 8 program 10 years. I am member of Coalition for Economic Survival. In April 2002, the City Council of Los Angeles approved very important, for my vision, historical ordinance to make unlawful for any landlord to terminate Section 8 rental assistance contract. This ordinance saved life much disabled at seniors' tenants with low income. Before this ordinance, much my friends and approximately 6,000 Section 8 voucher contracts was canceled landlords in Los Angeles. If seniors and disabled tenants live long time in apartment buildings under their rent control, the landlord cannot terminate Section 8 program and put these families to eviction. For my vision, this is elderly abuse. I come here for my friends and very old and disabled peoples. It is difficult for them come to City Hall. And I urge you to appeal the court decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rod Field with Los Angeles Housing Law Project. I was last here about two and a half years ago on this issue, and at that time, the city council approved it. Basically, what this does is saying that a landlord who is under the Section 8 program cannot promise the housing authority that they will take Section 8, and then change his mind and say, I'm not going to take Section 8, and by the way, I'm going to evict a tenant for not being able to pay the rent. Obviously, if there are tenants on Section 8, they don't have the money to pay the rent without the Section 8 contract. That's a good way to get a decontrolled unit. About two and a half years ago, or maybe three years ago, vacancy rate went through the roof in this city. And so landlords could charge basically anything they want for a rent-controlled unit once they got rid of the Section 8 tenant. And that's what they did. In that year, we lost 6,000 to 8,000 Section 8 contracts. There were 6,000 to 8,000 tenants were put out on the street. These tenants, for the main part, are either handicapped elderly or extremely low-income. So we had children, lots of clients come to my office with, in wheelchairs, literally in wheelchairs, hoping for some solution to this, so they wouldn't be placed out on the street. Unfortunately, we couldn't do anything for them, except go to the city council and ask for help. So we enacted this law, saying you can't evict a tenant who's on Section 8, cancel their contract, and then evict them for non-payment of rent. This went into effect about two years ago. I think most of you weren't here, except for the chair. It's been very successful. Currently, I've checked with the housing authority, currently there are over 30,000, over 30,000, 30,982 Section 8 contracts. If we do not appeal this, the apartment owners associations in both LA and Santa Monica urging their membership, the apartment owners, to turn these people out on the street. All they can do is give them a notice, we're done, you have to move, period. That means about 67,000 tenants will be displaced. I urge you to go ahead and appeal this case. This case, actually, I knew about the court's decision before the court signed the order, the findings in this case. Went to the city attorney's office, I went to the housing authority, I went to the housing department, I called various council offices, saying we have to appeal this. That was before September 1st.
Mr. Field, can I ask you to some, please?
Okay. That was before September 1st. We're now at the end of October. Today is really the day to file the appeal. If we wait any longer, it becomes, becomes a law. We're putting those, these people at extremely risk of being displaced. I urge your "I" vote for an appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Alisa Garrett Barrett.
Hello, Alisa Barrett. I'm the Director of the Housing Conditions Project from Betzettick Legal Services. Betzettick, for over 30 years, has served thousands, hundreds of thousands of low-income tenants in Los Angeles, much like Mr. Brzinski right here, Skibinski. Imagine Staples Center filled with people like Mr. Skibinski. That's what we're talking about. Imagine yourselves, the city council members, standing in the middle of Staples Center Stadium and looking up at all those people, and them asking you, when you had the ability to preserve the city's right to push this issue through the courts, not even, did you go all the way, but did you merely preserve your right to explore it further? You want to be able to look up at Staples Center Stadium, filled with people like Mr. Skibinski, and say, yes. When we were approached with this issue, we knew we had one more day, that's it. This notice of appeal has to be filed on Monday, or the city waives its right to appeal this issue. You want to be at least able to say, yes, we did at least that. We preserved our rights, and we wanted to explore the issue further. Now, the trial court has made a very broad statement, dealing with the city's ability to use its police power to protect consumers. It's an important issue. The city of Los Angeles and the County of Los Angeles have acted time and time again through the city attorney's office to pursue the power of home rule and to protect that. And what City of Los Angeles does is a bellwether for the rest of California, and what California does is a bellwether for the rest of the country. Thank you. My final comment is, we are faced with a national election next week. The current administration has made many decisions through the administration of HUD that have had an enormous impact on this city's ability to deliver Section 8 housing to its residents in need. I ask you merely to preserve the right of this locality to do everything that it can to protect low-income citizens like Mr. Skibinski. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That now closes the public hearing. I am going to ask the council, the clerk to clear the chambers, so we can go into executive session and discuss this with our council. Would those not part of our public session, our executive session, please vacate the chambers? And members, again, I just want to ask everyone to stay here, because we've heard this is a one-day decision.
Mr. Clerk, next item before us, please.
On item 20, there's a recommendation to request the city attorney to file an appeal of the decision of the trial court in the case entitled Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles versus City of Los Angeles.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on Tuesday, November 16th for city business, meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused.
Councilmember Grul requests to be excused Tuesday and Wednesday, November 23rd and 24th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Grul is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, do you have any announcements today? Mr. Reyes, trick or treat?
Yes, we have a Neighbor-to-Neighbor Resource Fair tomorrow, October 30th, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at 5501 Montevista Street. It's a resource fair with entertainment. We're trying to provide as much guidance, as much information, our communities can benefit from the various support systems the city and other agents have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Do we have any other announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two events of interest in the 8th District on Saturday, October 30th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. There's going to be an African-American-Latino conference where there will be established dialogue between the Latino and African-American communities with the goal of reducing rising tensions between the two communities. It's an event that is no fee, no cost. It's going to be at the USC Town and Gown. There'll be a variety of Latino and African-American clergy and community leaders, among them being Sheriff Baca, Supervisor Burke, Assemblyman Margaret Lee Thomas, myself, and along with Councilman Member Villarogosa will all be there. Also, at 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, the Alpha Gamma Omega Chapter of the Kappa Alpha Alpha Sorority will hold a community health fair and screening service in La Mert Park at 43rd and Dagnan. They're offering free health screenings, breast cancer screenings, blood pressure screening, counseling by doctors, CPR, and free handouts.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other announcements? Mr. Carradines.
I just wanted to remind all the families and children of Los Angeles that if you look around the corner, there's probably a park somewhere, or a center run by the City of Los Angeles that's going to have some tricks or treats and things of that nature. For example, in my district, over at Branford Park, they're going to have some activities going on today and through the weekend. And also at Sun Valley Recreation Center, they're going to have activities tonight and Saturday and Sunday as late as 11:00 PM. And, you know, so I just wanted to remind everybody that these activities are going on, so look at your local park, there's probably a sign hanging out right now, so telling you what date and what time you should bring your children by and your family, so you can enjoy the festivities.
If not, we have adjourning motions today. Please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I have four today. First is Liam L. Yancy Jr., who passed away on Saturday, October 23rd. He was born on November 3rd, 1925, and was a resident on Dunsmere Avenue for over 30 years. He retired as a general building contractor. He is a longtime member of First AME Church, where he held the position as member of the Board of Trustees. He was active in the community with his wife, Eleonora Yancy. His wife, Eleonora Yancy, is a member of the 10th District Women's Steering Committee. The funeral services are beginning right now at First AME Church, 1 o'clock today. Second one is Evangelist Ruth Elliot Bailey, who passed away on Wednesday, October 6th. Ruth Bailey was a doer of the Word of God, not just a hearer. Like all of us, she dealt with the challenge of this world sometimes successfully, sometimes not, but always looking for God for guidance. She was not timid about telling you where her strength came from. When asked how she was, she always replied, blessed and highly favored. She used the talents and treasures the Lord gave her to bless her family, her friends, and her church and her community. Through her position at California State University, LA, she inspired and helped many students to pursue their academic studies, including Martin Ludlow, who got his degree while Ruth was there. She was a great, great friend and assistant as I went through my degree in criminal justice. As the official mother of her children's choir, the Hills Angels, she provided motherly love and support when needed. She started one of the most outreach ministries at Cochran Avenue Baptist Church, The Good Seed Kitchen, a feeding ministry for anyone needing nourishment. Ruth led a group of loving and dedicated volunteers, who, along with the good food, served the Word of God. One mark of a great leader is whether they train others to follow, and she did. Ruth Bailey will always be loved and remembered for her diligence, persistence, and faith. May rest in peace. Then, these next two are very challenging. I know that the Eason family is watching right now. A dear, dear friend of mine, Teresa Eason, who's been my neighbor for many years, she lost both her brother and her mother recently. And so I will begin with her brother. David Adolf Tefoya was born June 25th, 2004, excuse me, was born June 25th. He was born and raised in Denver, Colorado. He attended Catholic High School, Baker Elementary School, Josephine Hodgkins Junior High, and West High School. He then went on to earn his barber's license, after which he relocated to Los Angeles in the mid-1960s. He worked in silk screening for many years while going to school to learn to repair their machines. Adolf eventually moved on to St. Vincent de Paul, where he supervised the repair of their appliances. During that time, Adolf married and started a family. He leaves behind his five children, Latitia, Dolores, David, Caroline, and Andrew. At the time of his passing, he left behind his mother, Genevieve Trejo, and siblings, Esther, Teresa, Angelina, Emma, George, Gina, Joseph, and Helen. In addition, nine grandchildren, and a host of nieces and nephews, aunts, uncles, cousins, and friends. He will be deeply missed. Then his mother, and Teresa's mother, Genevieve Pat Trejo, also known as Sis, Mama, Grandma Pat, Vera, and Auntie, was born in Pueblo, Colorado, September 23rd, 1919. Genevieve moved from Denver to Los Angeles in 1959. It was then that she began a career with the Volunteers of America, and later the Goodwill Industries. Genevieve loved to dance. From the Trocadero in Denver, Colorado, to the Palladium in Los Angeles, Pat had a great passion for dancing. She loved her children, her grandchildren, her nieces and nephews. She remains a huge part of their lives. Pat is survived by six of her beloved children, Esther, Teresa, Angie, Emma, George, and Regina, her daughter Geraldine, and son, who preceded Genevieve in death. Pat also leaves behind her loving brothers, Jesse and Felix, sister Gloria, 23 grandchildren, 24 great-grandchildren, and many more nieces and nephews. Grandma Pat will be greatly missed. Her smile, humor, strength, and love are all few of the things she will be remembered by, by those who knew her well. And to the Eason family, we love you all and best wishes. And Teresa, we hope that you're getting some very well-deserved rest at home after losing two beloved members of your family.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three adjourning motions. First of all, Leah Andrew Kirk Jr., who is the brother of the former mayor of the city of Dallas, Texas, Ron Kirk, passed away after a lengthy of Dallas, Texas, Ron Kirk, passed away after a lengthy illness at the age of 54 on October 12th of 2004. He was educated in Texas Public Schools and graduated from Stephen F. Austin High School in '68, attended Texas Southern University in Houston, Texas. From an early age, he had a keen interest in, and a passion for music. He sung with a variety of groups and toured throughout the world with those groups, Japan, throughout the United States. Following his professional music career, returned to Texas in '79. Were had a long career with the Austin Independent School District, working as a guidance counselor at Marin Junior High School and also Travis High School. He made the transition to government employment, where he worked as a special programs coordinator for the Texas General Land Office in the 90s, 1996, before retiring. During the 90s, he was reunited and was married with his child, his sweetheart. Throughout his life, he dedicated to his family and friends. The funeral service were held in Austin, Texas, October 16th. He leaves a host of relatives, his brother, mother, and a variety of brothers and sisters. Also, two local residents, Lawrence Tolliver Sr., a resident of Los Angeles since 1947. He's married to Mrs. Irene Bradley in 1937, had four children, two of which preceded him in death. Mr. Tolliver worked at the steel mill as a machinist for Tennessee Colon Iron and was a member of the company's baseball team, where he played for a teammate by the name of Cat Mays, the father of legendary Willie Mays. He moved his family to Los Angeles. He began working for the Mission Appliance Company, which was later known as Gaffers and Sadler, where he worked as a press operator. He was a member of a championship baseball team for the company. He later was an assistant coach and head of the Little League Baseball Program at Harvard Park in 8th District, where he worked on, with a variety of young people in the community. He's a member of his Masonic Lodge. Even as his advanced age, he would make a point to go daily to his son Lawrence Jr.'s barber shop, which is renowned now as one of those political hotbeds where everyone that wants to go in South Los Angeles and find out the texture and the temperature stops by. And so he's there. He was known as the King of Checkers. He played there almost daily. Born September 12th, 1912, passed away at the age of 92 on October 14th, 2004. Prior to his wife passing away, he's married for 59 and a half years. Service is held at Angeles Funeral Home on Saturday, October 30th, 12 noon. The final one I have is Sam Albert Brangier, born in Burnside, Louisiana, February 14th, 1913. He attended school in Louisiana, was considered a hard worker's drive to do the best he could. He was married to his wife Evelyn in 1935. Together, they had five children. In '57, he became a member of Ebenezer Baptist Church under the leadership of Reverend Lot. Upon his retirement, and for many years, he ran the Brangier Realty Company at about 60th and Western. And once he retired, he and his wife moved to Las Vegas, Nevada. He basically has numerous awards, humanitarian awards, throughout the Board of Realtors and various organizations. He was 91 years of age. He passed away on Saturday, October 23rd. Funeral service would be at Great Ebenezer Baptist Church on Saturday, September 30th, at 11:00 AM. Had the good fortune of going to school with both his son Sam and Eleanor, who Eleanor preceded him in death several years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request for adjourned memory of Stace Besparitas, passed away in a fire in Woodland Hills on October 26th. Born in Lithuania, November 23rd, 1917, came to America in 1949, resided in Cleveland, Ohio. And in 1975, Stace moved to California, where she took up residency in Topanga. 1993, she and her husband moved to Sedona, Arizona, where they owned a property. Following that, moved back to California this year, following her husband's death. Homemaker, who enjoyed reading, listening to music, and gardening, loved playing golf with her husband. Survived by two daughters, Irene Monzat of Topanga Canyon, Regina Dur of Flagstaff, Arizona, and two granddaughters and a grandson. This was one of the tragic deaths in a fire that occurred, and a similar situation occurred in the Councilmember Gruehl's district a few days ago, on October 26th. May Stace Besparitas rest in peace.
Any other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.